Can we have a roll call, please?
I want ice cream.
Commissioner Raab?
I want his ice cream.
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Raab. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
You're very serious with the program here. Anyway, if you would all join me in the face, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got Arbor Day coming up, and I'm going to have a proclamation regarding it. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas the trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of the business areas, and beautify our community, whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Oregon City is working to attain designation of Tree City, USA, and whereas the city is blessed with many tree-rich natural areas, now therefore, I, Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim April 17, 2012 as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plan and care for trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations, and therefore, I will be setting my signature to this today, 4th of April, 2012. Thank you. And what's 25th?
This is the 17th. This is the 27th.
Oh gee whiz. What did I do? It is April 27. I make all kinds of blunders. I've been switching names and so forth. At our opening of our -- cutting our ribbon, Mayor Norris was there, Alice Norris, I introduced her as Al Norris, and that was an accident. I sent her an email, those of you who are Paul Simon fans, and to whom this might mean something, from the Grace Line album, one of his songs, I said that she could call me Betty. But anyway, hear that. We, Paul Simon and music and so forth, we've been trying fairly successfully to have our first Wednesdays to have a local music artist come to us to perform, and we're very pleased to have Ray Gordon, a blues gospel singer, and she's going to perform a piece, I believe, of a person who's recently passed away. Is that right?
Yeah. This is a, would be a song from Etta James. I wanted to thank you for allowing me to come as sort of an ambassador of the vibrant music scene that's down Main Street from the 505 Tavern to Trails End Saloon.
Very good.
Very nice.
I'm gonna walk around.
Are you gonna?
I don't know where to face. This is Gaddis-Cavina with me as well to do a guitar.
We'll be part of the audience.
Oh. I'm gonna have to stand up. All right. Or Etta James.
Oh, sure.
I want you to say. It'd be lazy.
Wow. Sometimes I get a good feeling. You can do that, too, if you want. I get a feeling that I never, never, never had before. And I gotta tell you, I know, yeah, 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 yeah. I gotta tell you, I know that it's gotta hold on me, yeah, yeah, yeah. I said something gotta hold on me right now, child. Let me tell you, I got a feeling, I feel so good, everything about me seems to have changed. Step by step, I got a brand-new walk, I even sound sweeter when I talk. I said, oh, I said, oh, I said, oh, I said, yeah. I said, oh, yeah, oh, it must be love. Something's gotta hold on me, yeah, yeah, yeah. I said something's gotta hold on me right now, child. Let me tell you, my heart feels happy, my feet feel light, I shake all over, but I feel all right. I never felt like this before. Something's gotta hold on me that won't let go. I believe, I wonder, if only I could, I should feel happy, but I should feel good. I never felt like this before. Love's gonna put a hold on me. I said, oh, 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 yeah, oh, it must be love. You know it talks like love, oh, it feels like love. Everything's gonna be all right, just like you knew it would. Na, 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 na. Na, 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 na. Hey, hey, hey. Yeah, 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 yeah. You know it must be love, must be. You know it must be love. Gaddis, everybody. Please, all. Thank you so much. For Main Street Musician.
Don't take that as a question.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna go ask him if he brought enough for everybody. That was a full ice cream when he came in. Where's the rest?
Ray, are you going to be more, or can they hear you?
Yeah, every Thursday, I'm at Trails End Saloon, and the first Sunday, I do a gospel show there, too, as well, and all around Portland Metro, but Oregon City has a thriving music scene, so please come see it.
And for all us minors who can't go into bars, you're gonna be performing concerts in the park this year, she's gonna be one of our singers.
Sing and get a library book and a call. Not in that order. Thank you, guys, so much.
All right, we don't wanna go hard, do you?
Great job.
Thanks to the chorus. To the audience.
That's amazing. We do have, we do have some others, people scheduled to perform, too, here in the coming months. I have informed our city manager, who plays the guitar, he can expect a call, too. Anyway, I've got, usually, when we have the reports, oftentimes, we make announcements at the end, but by the time we come to the end of our program, almost everybody's lucky to turn off the television set, so I'd like to make some announcements. We have the Future Flow Dedication on Friday, April 13, 2012, here, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., City Hall, and this is a ceremony in which there's a, there's an art dedication here in recognition of the tremendous contributions of former Mayor Alice Norris, and I invite you all to come to that event. Again, that's April 13, 5 to 6. We had, we had recognized this month at the previous commission meeting as the Grange Month, and it was announced there by a person that was supporting it that April 15, from 1 to 4 p.m., at the Redland Grange, there will be a open house in celebration of Grange Month, and that's over on Fisher Mills Road outside of Redland. And one other announcement is, oh, there's two other announcements, actually. Tuesday, April 17, at the Museum of the Oregon Territory at 11:30, the various service clubs in Oregon City will be recognizing the people that have been involved in community service. And finally, we're going to, shortly, having our Saul, Joint Saul City Cleanup Day, and that's going to be on April 21, I believe, the meeting time, at the, at Clarkman Park will be 9 o'clock.
8:30, I saw.
8:30? That could be. And 8:30 to eat, and then we'll have various sites for cleanup activities in the city. With that, we'll go on to any, anybody that has citizen comments that are on items not on the agenda can come forward and speak, no more than three minutes, and I don't see anybody on board this time. Of course, people will be invited up to speak to things on the agenda later. With that, we'll go to the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything anybody want pulled from the consent agenda?
I don't think so.
Move to approve.
Okay, so we're approving the agenda as it's written, and we'll go ahead and proceed into, into general business. We have here before us, Appeal of Nonconforming Determination on L N 1105, that's AP 110 from AP 01, and Mr. Conkle will be, will be discussing this, but I don't see.
Mr. Conkle's not here.
Somebody else is going to be discussing. Okay, very good.
The applicant has requested another two weeks to prepare the findings, and we recommend it.
Okay, very good.
You'll need to make a motion to continue for two weeks.
Do I hear a motion?
Provoke.
Second.
Roll call? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any days?
Okay, that's fine. The next thing we have, and I'll try not to mess it up, is a first reading of Ordinance Number 12-1004, amending Chapter 9.24 of the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to carrying or discharging of weapons. Mr. Sullivan again will be speaking.
Yes, this is an ordinance amendment necessitated by changes in state law, in particular to assure that somebody who has a license to carry a concealed weapon is not otherwise subject to the general prohibitions. We are required to follow state law, so this is a requirement.
It's a requirement, so it's in our best interest to approve this ordinance. We do have Kevin Hunt, who wishes to speak. Would you come forward, please? Typical introduction, just name the city that you live in or don't live in.
My name's Kevin Hunt. I live in Oregon City. It's good to see housekeeping measures like this, and that's commendable. While you're at it, though, I thought I'd just point out a couple of things that have been in the code for a long time that I'd like you to think about changing because they have caused some problems. Let's see, F, on page 2 of the ordinance, "No person shall discharge a bow and arrow, BB gun, or air gun within the city limits." As a ham radio operator, I can tell you the way we get our wires up in the trees way up there is with bows and arrows, and every time we do that, we're committing a misdemeanor, and we can be arrested, and now the Supreme Court says we can be body cavity searched.
There you go. Something to look forward to.
It's not my idea, but fun afternoon. But anyway, I've seen other towns that have had this prohibition, and they've said, "No person shall discharge a bow and arrow in the direction of another person, or in a dangerous manner," that kind of language. And what we're trying to prevent is people being reckless and dangerous, I think, with bows and arrows. BB guns and air guns, I understand why people don't want those being discharged in the city limits because of kids running around and shooting windows out. However, you might consider, like, making it legal to discharge a BB gun or air gun indoors, and also, you know, this is, this is obsolete technologically. You've probably heard of soft, soft air guns, you know, they shoot their little yellow pellets, and they, they go much slower, they go like 250 or 300 feet per second, and people even shoot, shoot at each other with them, and they, you know, they wear goggles, and they play with them indoors, and I guess every person who does that's gonna be a misdemeanor, and some of them would end up in juvenile hall, I guess. I mean, I don't mean to be silly about it, but if you're not gonna enforce the law, which you can't enforce, because it's, it would be ridiculous to enforce it to that degree, then you have selective enforcement is what results. So I just wanted to throw those ideas out. I would strongly recommend that you take a look at that particular provision, and just bring it up to date technologically, and, you know, I could tell you, there's a lot of people who bow and arrow practice in their backyards and do so safely, they've got bales of hay, there, there's no way their arrow can reach another house, and anyway. A couple other things, just so you know, it's already a felony under state law, by the way, to discharge a firearm within an urban growth boundary. There's no reason you can't have your own provision against discharging a weapon in the city limits also, and I suppose that gives, gives some discretion, you don't want everybody tagged with a felony, so I'm not suggesting you change that, in case somebody were to mention it.
Does this cover paintball stuff?
Well, I forgot to mention that, but it certainly could. Some, see, some of these devices are spring-operated, some are air-operated, some are gas-operated with cartridge, gas cartridges, and so, you know, air gun, I don't know, I guess, I guess the common, the common understanding would be that's something that you pump up, that you compress the air yourself, but, I don't know, could, could apply maybe to some other things. I'd just like to ask that you maybe take this one a little slower, maybe have some work done on number F, and maybe, I see that in another ordinance you did, someone named a citizen proposed an ordinance, and you ended up adopting that one, so maybe I could talk to this a citizen person, and maybe he would also suggest some language on this one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We, I guess we have a model ordinance before us. Do you want to speak to that?
There is all sorts of things that could be done.
Yeah.
With most of your regulations. We only come in when there's been a request.
Right.
We'd only change the section that you asked us to.
Yeah.
If you want us to look at more, happy to look at more, but it's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
I guess oftentimes, if something gets discharged in a home or something, the basis of being able to, if somebody's been hurt in the process, to be, probably the basis of being able to enforce it is to have an ordinance of this nature. It doesn't mean that we've got a bunch of TV cameras monitoring what we do in the homes. A lot of people, it's against federal law for minors to, to drink, and I think a lot of parents, in fact, have their kids drink a little wine or something at the table with them or something. It is illegal, but I don't think these things are really ever enforced unless you had a very...
That's not illegal.
Yeah, so, hm?
That's not illegal, Mr. Sullivan.
I was told that was.
Well, it's not illegal for a, for a parent to allow a child to have alcohol with the family, if it's at home, it's not, it's not a matter of government law.
So maybe what we should do is pass this for tonight?
Well, we went for a first reading, and so I would say if anybody's gonna suggest we make amendments to this, then we probably won't even want to take this into a first reading. I, like I say, almost all our code violations and other violations are enforced by complaints or by activities that have, that have resulted in, in it being very apparent that something's been done wrong. Yes?
I know at one time, the Clarkman Community College had, had an archery program, and you would go there frequently and see people shooting bows and arrows in the college campus, so I don't know if that still exists, but this affects things like that, this affects things like J ROTC, which also has a program. So I think that was the one thing that stuck out to me, was, was the bow and arrow and the other piece. So I do have questions about it and how it affects some of the other things going on, and I don't know, you know, to what degree those things are happening still in the city, but...
Well, I think I'm picking up a basis that maybe we ought to take a look at this and...
Especially that issue, I'd like to.
Have it reasonably directed towards areas, in fact, where there's a strong likelihood of somebody, either intentionally or unintentionally, being injured by these devices. We already have in our, we can't use projectiles in the city, is that right, in our code?
Right. This, yes, you're right.
So we guess, I guess, and our code, I think our code already prohibits this, that's the thing. Any projectile. I think we have that come...
If I remember correctly, that this ordinance covers that, as far as what type of weapons or BB guns, or bows and arrows, and things like that, that can be used within the city limits.
But we had, already had something in code, right?
This is the, this is the ordinance.
This is?
This is the ordinance that we operate on?
But this doesn't address that.
So I guess I would...
This says, "No person shall discharge bow, arrow, BB gun, air gun."
Yeah.
I would ask, what brought this forward?
We said, federal, federal law.
What brought it forward?
A change to state statute.
Okay.
Which would exempt anybody with a concealed handgun license from the otherwise prohibitions.
Okay.
All right, and that was the only thing we were asked to change.
Okay.
So if you want to do more, then what you ought to do is just continue the ordinance to another date, and give us some instructions. What do you want us to look at?
I think his point about legitimate lessons that are, you know...
I can't remember, I, I think ROTC has, I mean, they do shooting, I'm sure, in the city. I'm almost positive.
I'm sure this was put in there for endangerment. Yeah. On purpose, and if it was stated that way.
I know, but that's not what it says.
Right. If it was stated that way.
I guess it's kind of, it's kind of the case of trying to phrase your ordinance that way.
Right.
You'd always phrase something in a supervised sporting event, or under the supervision of, or words to that effect, where it would take care of junior ROTC, or the archery club at the college, or things like that.
That'd be perfect.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think there's an exemption in what you have before you for shooting gallery...
Kevin, I think you have to come to the mic.
Oh, yeah, down below, it says...
The likelihood with the bow and arrows is that it's, it's, it may be overreach.
Okay, it says, "Target range, shooting gallery, or organization, or business, a person conducting athletic contest to fire blank ammunition towards the sky." So it does...
It does allow it.
It does have some of those in there, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if we want to get to the point where we think of every other possible, you know, by hand operators or other, I imagine there's other things, too, but...
The way I looked at it, it looked like, it looked like...
Please come to the, yeah, come to the mic, Kevin.
Sorry. It looked to me like, it looked to me like those exemptions didn't, didn't apply to the, to the bow and arrow. It looked like it was just a flat-out prohibition on bow and arrow. Maybe, maybe Mr. Sullivan could clarify that, but it looked like a flat-out prohibition on discharging a bow and arrow BB gun or pellet gun within the city, and that the other, that all those exemptions applied to discharge of a firearm, as opposed to...
It does cover it. So, yeah, I think it's fine, actually, now that I look at it.
Well, but I don't think it is fine, because...
Well, that's your lawyer interpretation.
No, it's not my lawyer interpretation, it's a common sense, rational interpretation that if I shoot a bow and arrow in my backyard, I'm breaking the law.
Well...
I'm not an organized sport, I'm not an athletic event, I'm not a shooting gallery, I'm not a club.
Purpose of shooting practice, that's what it is.
That's what it says.
It say it has to be at a organized...
No.
Remember, guest or patron.
Or, but it says, or business.
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise, I could go in my backyard and shoot my pistol on it. Don't think that'd be a very good idea.
Right, so if you're a business, you can. If you have a business license, you can.
Bad idea, but anyway, I just, I would just ask you, maybe, maybe, you know, like I said, there's other, in other towns with bows and arrows, they say, "Shall not discharge a bow and arrow towards a, towards another individual, you know, towards a person, or in the direction of another person, or in a manner that endangers public safety," which is pretty broad, but I mean, it's just saying, "Don't be reckless or negligent with it," and I think that's what you're trying to avoid. And I also don't know how that would apply to a kid who had a little toy bow and arrow with a suction cup on it.
Right.
I mean, again, I hate to bring up absurd examples, but if you're gonna have a law, and you're gonna make something a crime, you can't, you shouldn't proceed on the basis of, "Well, we'd never, we would never enforce it that way." I've heard that 100 times about laws.
I think that would be something that we could do easily.
Is there a broad consensus that we need to look at this to deal with the, you know, we got it, I don't see, what does it read? Just take a look at, if we need to give, I think we give some specific direction to our attorney if we're gonna modify it, so we better take a very close look at it.
Yeah. I'm gonna read it again.
So now, fire, discharge a firearm. So much of this is directed to firearms, and then we come to the discharge of a bow and arrow, BB gun or air gun within the city limits.
Might need to suggest just a real simple change, Mr. Sullivan.
You're not come to the mic.
Yeah, you will, you will, but I'm going through the whole thing at this moment.
Yeah.
What I was thinking is perhaps, let me bring it up here, I probably left it back at my, oh, here we go. On F, again, this might be, might be something we could just break it into two sentences. You could change F maybe to say, "No person shall discharge a BB gun or air gun within the city limits," removing bow and arrow, and then add a second sentence to that paragraph that says, "No person shall discharge a bow and arrow within the city limits in the direction of another person, or in a manner likely to endanger persons or property," and that was, I think, maybe solve the problem.
I guess my problem is this. A BB gun can cause injury, too, just as a bow and arrow can, and I had a kid in my neighborhood, lost an eye when I was a kid to a BB, to a BB pellet, and, you know, I think the same thing could be said, well, you can use BB guns just for target practice in the back, and there's, I'm not sure that it's a whole lot less dangerous if, inappropriately done than a bow and arrow. I mean, they, a lot of BB guns are designed to create a great deal of pressure when the, when the pellets are discharged.
But I have an, my, my proposal doesn't ask you to lighten the prohibition at all on a BB gun.
It says, "Cleave the BB gun."
Or an air gun.
But no, but, you know, that's true, but I'm saying a bow and arrow, I think, is perhaps just as dangerous as a BB gun.
It is.
I mean, I don't know that...
It is if it's used improperly, it doesn't carry anywhere near as far.
But that's true of the BB gun as well.
Yeah.
If used improperly.
Yep. So...
Mayor, if you, if the commission is so inclined to do something about the archery component of your ordinance, I would probably recommend that you also keep in mind that modern compound bows can penetrate...
Oh, yeah.
Planks like this and bring down a moose. So there are, you know, it's one thing to think about the toy, and then the other end of the extreme is how responsible people are gonna be, and it's, we're really looking for responsible behavior, and...
It is to deal, I mean, it's, people, people get injured by these things all the time, and sometimes killed, where the person wasn't implying to be irresponsible, wasn't pointing it at somebody on purpose.
Exactly.
People are killed by automobiles all the time, probably the most deadly and dangerous weapon there is, but we don't outlaw automobiles, we say you can't drive them recklessly, you can't drive them negligently. It's a tool like anything else, and I, I'm just suggesting that I, first of all, I don't think that there, the prevalence of bow and arrow is very, is very great, and you will have clearly on the book something that says, "You do not discharge this in the direction of another person, and don't do it in such a manner that endangers persons or property." I think that leaves a pretty wide-open door for enforcement.
I don't know, what do you think, chief? Give me your thoughts.
You know, it's somewhat complicated, I definitely understand what Mr. Hunt is saying, but then again, my opinion is to always err on the safety of the community, and as Mr. Fraser said, sometimes, compound bows, crossbows, hunting bows are a very powerful weapon, and much more powerful than a BB gun, much more deadly, potentially. I'm not opposed to rewriting the ordinance, to try to accommodate some of the people, like the ham radio operators and such, but I think we have to be very careful in how we, how we address that issue, because it does have the potential to hurt somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree.
I guess, I mean, the bow and arrow thing, piece, I mean, I don't know how many people I know that hunt in Oregon City that I know shoot bow and arrow in their backyard all the time.
Exactly, right.
I mean, all over the city, so I, I just, I guess my concern is how prevalent it is, and yet...
can't drive them negligently. It's a tool like anything else, and I, I'm just suggesting that I, first of all, I don't think that there, the prevalence of bow and arrow is very, is very great, and you will have clearly on the book something that says, "You do not discharge this in the direction of another person, and don't do it in such a manner that endangers persons or property." I think that leaves a pretty wide open door for enforcement.
I don't know. What do you think, Chief? Give me your thoughts.
You know, it's somewhat complicated. I definitely understand what Mr. Hunt is saying, but then again, my opinion is to always err on the safety of the community. And as Mr. Fraser said, sometimes compound bows, crossbows, hunting bows are a very powerful weapon, and much more powerful than a BB gun, much more deadly, potentially. I'm not opposed to rewriting the ordinance to try to accommodate some of the people, like the ham radio operators and such, but I think we have to be very careful in how we, how we address that issue, because it does have the potential to hurt somebody.
Yeah, I would agree.
I guess, I mean, the bow and arrow thing piece, I mean, I don't know how many people I know that hunt in Oregon City that I know shoot bow and arrow in their backyard all the time. I mean, all over the city. So I, I just, I guess my concern is how prevalent it is, and yet, you know, so that's my concern, how, I don't see it being realistic to say we can't allow it because it happens, it's every weekend.
Well, the problem is, honestly, I don't know. I cannot remember, and I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but it has not come to my attention that we have ever been called to a residence because somebody was target practicing in their backyard.
Right, right.
I'm not a hunter myself, so I don't know of anybody who does that, but...
Well, partly because no one knows this is here. I mean, if people did, they probably, they might, they might very well call if someone knew that.
And I've got a neighbor that has it right outside my bedroom window.
So, Mr. Hunt, how would we enforce what you're suggesting?
If someone witnesses a bow and arrow being used in a dangerous manner, they will call the police.
So how is that different than what we have right now?
What you have right now, you can't use a bow and arrow at all.
Except in...
And how many calls do we get?
I, I can't answer that.
I'm betting my point is, is no one knows about it.
I had a call on me.
I could call the police tonight and say someone's shooting a bow and arrow.
I had a call on me when I was, a few years ago, when I was helping a friend put a, put a wire up in a tree. Somebody called the police.
I don't know.
I mean, it needs to be worked on a little bit. I don't know how to do it.
If you just add on to the end with any risk of endangering or hurting an animal or a human.
Yeah, I think something like that would be...
Just add on in the end, and then it's real specific.
Or damaging property.
Damage property as well.
"Manner likely to endanger persons or property" would be what I would suggest, or in the direction, or in the direction of a...
Mr. Sullivan's inter-...
If you're heading in that direction, let me come back. Let me come back with some thought. And also, you know, getting outside what exactly was changed. Look at G1A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't want to think of every exception in the world like somebody, ham operator. I mean, I think it has to be rather succinct and broad enough that we don't have to worry about a whole lot of unusual exceptions.
Exactly, because, well, as a ham operator, I don't want to discharge a bow and arrow towards a person or in a manner likely to endanger a person or property. So I think that's, that's what you're trying to get. It's the same, it's just like the careless driving statute. You can't drive in a manner likely to endanger persons or property.
What if there's an airplane flying overhead?
It's crazy.
Continue the ordinance for two weeks. We'll bring you something back.
Move to continue? I hear a motion?
Continue.
Move to continue, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. With that, we will go into a second reading of ordinance 12-1003 amending, chapter 5.04 of Oregon City Municipal Code relating to the process of issuing business licenses. Mr. Fraser?
This is just a second reading of the first reading. We've read this now, I think, four months, so no new changes on the second reading.
Second reading, please. Oh, motion for it?
Motion to approve second reading and final adoption. Second.
This is ordinance number 12-1003, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City amending chapter 5.04 of the Oregon City Municipal Code relating, related to business licenses.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mumm?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Can I ask a question, because I always forget this at the end of the meeting? In all of these things, we keep getting this NBSP. There's an and sign, and then NB, do you know what that is?
Yes, I do. It's, it's just an integration issue. Just ignore it, and we're actually updating this in the next couple of weeks, so the whole system...
I keep trying to do something with it, you know.
No, just ignore it. There's nothing I can do about it. It will go away.
Okay. With that, we'll go to the personal service agreement between the City of Oregon City and Granicus for government transparency and agenda workflow solutions for the three-year term of April 4, 2012, to April 4, 2015, and Nancy Ito will be discussing this.
That's correct. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you tonight is a new three-year contract with Granicus Incorporated. This contract is a continuation of some of the services that we've received from Granicus since 2008, and some new features are being included. As you may know, in 2008, the city began web streaming its city commission meetings in response to two of your commission goals, which were to build a sustainable future and increase communications with citizens and facilitate the citizen participation. The video streaming, as you know, has been very successful in the community, not to mention the helpfulness that it is to staff and in processing meeting minutes. The videos have become a permanent verbatim record, and, which is a valuable resource for the city and its citizens. Within the next three years, the city added eight more meeting bodies, various boards and commissions to the web streaming, as well as provided a housing location for our numerous community videos. One feature that Granicus provides is a system to generate reports to measure the viewing by our citizens, and I thought this was just really interesting. So on your screen are two reports, if you are interested in pulling them up. One is the top 10 report. It's a report that lists the 10 most accessed videos in the last 365 days, and the other is a total viewers' report, which lists the total number of viewers in the last 365 days. So in case there's anyone here who might be interested in statistics, the total number of videos streamed this last year was 149. That's all the videos and meetings of all the boards and commissions and community events and trainings and so forth. So, but I would just like to take a look at the top 10 report, and just for your information, this is very interesting, because your goal number five was to increase communications with citizens, and the number one video is the Citizen Involvement Council. That is, that is the video that has been accessed more than any other video in the last year.
That's amazing.
And in fact, in the top 10, if you look carefully, there's, there's four city, citizen involvement council meetings.
Nobody cares about us at all.
I know. I'm like, city commission, eh, no.
Over the renewal, no.
Look at number four, the 2000, or the Highway 213 Jug Handle Groundbreaking.
That even got more than us.
Number four accessed video. I just thought that was kind of interesting.
I think nobody's interested in us.
We're going to get, we're going to get a count on the, on the, on the web stream of our, of our bridge movement, I presume.
We can, yes.
I think, I think it's going to skyrocket.
I can, I can pull that up when it's posted.
Yeah, this is great.
And then the total viewers' report, it indicates that in the last year, that the total number of times that videos were accessed was 5,343 hits. So, you know, it's, it's working. You know, we are reaching out into the community, although I think that we can do better, even still, but, anyway, if you average the total number of viewers with the number of videos created, there's an average of 36 views for every video that we stream. So, that's just on, on average.
Does that count, if you go back and watch it a second time?
Well, that's, yes, it would be. It's the number of hits.
They're not keeping track of you personally.
They don't track your IP address. I love it.
The only, the only difficulty I have, you know, this is, this is, this is great background information, but I tried to pull up the personal service agreement. I can't get it.
What?
Well, it just came up. Well, I've been hitting it and hitting it. It is here. My apologies. I should have kept my mouth shut.
Like I said, this will be updated here soon. Anyway, the, the reports are good, but like I said, I think we can do even better with the number of, with reaching out, and I am personally committing to promoting our videos into the community even more this next year, you know, through various means, so...
This is wonderful. Great data.
The new three-year contract provides much more than just video streaming, however. It's a government transparency and agenda workflow solution. We'll be adding Legistar, which is a new method of creating our agendas. The vote cast system that you see in front of you will be upgraded, and it will give you more, it will give you an electronic voting option. And actually, at the meeting on the 18th, there will be a brief training. This is approved tonight. There will be a brief training for you on what your options are for that, and that NSPG and all that. I think that will go away, hopefully. And by the way, they are doing this upgrade for us at no cost.
That's wonderful.
Another freebie that Granicus is giving, and we've been talking about this for some time, is the e-comment module. And if you recall, this module allows citizens at home, or wherever, their mobile device or wherever, to participate in meetings by sending, by electronically, their comments on an, on an agenda item. And so by simply pulling up the agenda, they can use all the new tools that will be there to submit an opinion or a comment. There's a, there will be a cutoff time the day of the meeting, and then we will compile those by the click of a mouse, and they'll be automatically uploaded onto your screens, and we can also get those to you by email in advance if you wish, you know, if you check your email late in the day before the meeting. So there's, all that's up and coming, but that is another gift from Granicus. They're not charging us for that. And then lastly, a new module is included with this contract. It's the Training Management Suite, and this suite will create, manage, and deliver online video training for staff and citizens, or anyone for that matter. It, it's a valuable resource for the city, especially our police department, where they, they have testing they have to go through, and they can give tests and track all the results and that sort of thing, as well as human resources. We, we're purchasing the module at this point. We're not actually implementing it yet, because there is an additional cost for that, but we're not quite ready to go there yet. So we're just going to purchase it at this point in time. And lastly, the city did obtain two other bids. One was not a apples-to-apples type bid, and the other was an excellent option, but being that we were, we are, we're already integrated with Granicus, it just made sense to stay with the same company. So that's the report. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to...
So this, this proposal, in fact, is part of the agreement that we have before us. Their proposal?
Yes, yes.
Was there an increase in cost monthly?
The only, well, we're purchasing the Legistar system. That's a one-time purchase, and then there's a monthly cost for that, but the, but the one that we, we are currently using now is going to go away, so it's offsetting, being offset by that as well.
Looks good.
Any other questions? We have a...
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved to adopt this personal service agreement between us and Granicus. With that, roll call.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mumm?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. With that, we have the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
With that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mumm?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
With that, the city manager, it's reported.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this evening I have for you your goals booklets, published and ready to go, hot off the press, just in time for budget. We have lots of copies of those, and Nancy, that'll be on the website. This will be on the website if it's not already, so that's also available. Then I was going to ask Nancy Crushhour this evening to update us on transitioning soils at forest edge apartments.
Thank you. I think I probably shared an email with the commission and the mayor within the last week or so about the forest edge apartments, but I just wanted to give you a quick update. We are, we're focusing on monitoring our water line that serves the lower level of the apartments. That is a source of concern, because if for some reason we had troubles with it, we wouldn't have a good potable water supply for the, those residents. And we've also been working with Clackamas Fire and Oregon City Police to have a, basically a contingency plan that we can use and implement very quickly, should there be some sort of a situation that would occur where we'd want to, I don't really want to say the words, but should we have, should we need to think about evacuation of any sort. So at this point, the buildings structurally are fine, and we do have concerns with the access road, and we, the fire department has not considered taking large vehicles down there for two or three years now, and they've sent, they sent a letter to the property owner at least a year ago, letting them know what the situation is. And the fire department will take hose, run hose down there if there's a fire, and we can also, another thing we're doing right now is we have the water pressure turned down in the, in the pipe that goes down there, and we can open up that valve should we want to have higher volumes of water coming out of the fire hydrant at the bottom as well. So those are, that's part of our contingency plan, and I'll certainly keep you updated on any other things that are happening.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Speaking on the water, I know at South Fork, we've talked about, I think within the consortium, the water providers consortium, I think there's, or at least there was work with kind of mobile units for, for drinking water and that kind of thing. I don't know, I can't remember where they are in that process, but is it something like that? I mean, we have plans for that kind of a situation?
Yeah, I, well, what I've, a problem with getting too much equipment and stuff down there is if the, if the access road has a slide, then it'll be difficult to get equipment down there. Probably wouldn't be very prudent. We do, I believe Clackamas River Water has a potable water supply. At this point, we're more asking the property owners to be prepared for that kind of a thing. And then even if we can provide some sort of temporary potable water, we still have a wastewater management that should there be a big enough problem with the water line, there's probably going to be a problem with their pump station as well. So, but we're, it's all being very carefully looked at, and people, we're working together with the property owner. He's trying to take care of a stormwater system, and so that's where we're at right now.
I'm, I'll pose a question I don't, I don't want you to answer right now, but to give some thought and maybe make a presentation at a later time. Metro came up with its affordable housing stock, and it hasn't increased in general in most of, mostly, or it has in Portland, but here, we've had a slight decrease. I believe this is part of our affordable housing stock, is it not? That concerns me a little bit, that we're not meeting perhaps the amount of affordable housing that we need, but it concerns me here, because we are not at all certain of what the long-term future of those units is going to be, and what might happen should, in fact, we lose units. I mean, where, where are the possibilities of people to even temporarily be housed under those kinds of conditions?
Well, I think that report that we got this week, didn't that show that we'd already lost units?
Yeah, I saw one, a loss of one unit, and if I read the report correctly. And so I have a general concern, and then a more specific one is the potential we're going to lose some due to a, somewhat of a, for a landslide situation.
Right, and that's something we're sensitive to, and it's also another reason why we're trying to work with the property owners as much as we possibly can, and not do something prematurely, because those, people are relying on those residential units.
I'd like to have some thought given to our, to our housing stock in terms of affordable housing too, and how can...
We'll have to have Mr. Conkell talk.
No, no, I understand. This is just a thing that I want them for future, future discussion. Mr. Fraser?
Yes, thank you. Also, I want to let the commission know that the Oregon City Police Department has partnered with a group called Oregon City Together, and Oregon City Together is a cooperative action for healthy and drug-free use in Oregon City, and the partnership has installed a permanent drop box for unused prescriptions located at the police department. And so, thank you, Chief Conrad, you and your department for that. Also, to remind the council and community that National Drug Takeback Day is April 28th, so if you have that kind of thing in your house, fill up the box at the PD.
Do they go to the free clinic then?
Do they? No, I don't think so. Also, let you know that we're expecting our budget book back kind of within a week or so from the printer, and as soon as we get those, we'll distribute you the hard copies in advance of the budget meetings coming up later this month. We have also narrowed our, we're continuing to narrow the field of candidates for our finance director interviews, and we're going to be looking at, we've got a little bit of a challenge right now with our schedule, because we originally intended those interviews toward the middle of the month. toward the middle of the month, and then there was some delay at the beginning. And so we are now, the ideal interview dates are just about the same time we're doing the budget presentation, which I don't think is a very ideal for me and our senior staff and anyone else who's interested. So we're going to probably move the interviews back a week or so and find an alternate date, but we are making progress. And we think we have four that we're gonna invite to the final interviews. And then I will be going to the Northwest Regional City Manager Conference tomorrow in Hood River. And that's all I have. Does staff have anything else? Okay.
You may recall last time I mentioned the fact that I had gone to listen to the Milwaukee City Council meeting where the mayor of Milwaukee, Mayor Ferguson, had made a presentation on the potential passenger rail alternatives that might be coming forward, and he had stated to me that it was gonna be presented at C4.
Yes, that's tomorrow.
And that's tomorrow. So anybody that might be interested, I think you can come as a participant, of course, they have their own business that they have. Commissioner Mom is our representative there. I'm going to try to make that meeting, but I think I have a partial conflict, I'm not sure that I can make it all. And once again, although we've given the accolades and so forth, we really haven't mentioned at the commission meeting, the tremendous, well-thought-out, well-organized, and responsive effort on the part of our staff, on ODOT, our various emergency responders and so forth, to our 213 closure. I think every one of us are extremely pleased. We got complaints coming through, but most of the comments that I saw coming through were rather constructive. Some of them were in fact acted upon in terms of rerouting, some of them I think were rerouted independent of the recommendation, but it was an active, it was an active participation, that is, where the team saw that there were certain problems occurring, reroutings were done, and it was extremely responsive. And the one thing I noticed was, of course, Friday morning was a nightmare on McLaughlin. I walked down to see it, I didn't drive down to get into it.
You just stood on the side there and laughed at me.
No, no, I kinda shook my head. My speculation is that people said, "Well, gee, maybe if I just take off a half hour, an hour earlier, then that'll avoid it," and of course-
Everybody had that on their mind.
And I think a lot of people had that on their mind. And of course, the weekend was, things went smoothly, and I felt that Monday morning at least went far more smoothly than Friday morning. Traffic was moving down McLaughlin, and so they planned their trips, I think, differently based on their experience on Friday. I just want to compliment all of our staff and all of our partners that were involved in that effort. I was really pleased with it. I don't know if anybody else has some comments or observations as well. One thing I noticed was that 12th Street got used, Lynn didn't. There was very little traffic on Lynn, and I think what we see is people from outside of Oregon City have routes that they're used to. And it was, I thought it was quite interesting that Lynn had very, very little traffic when Mulala 7th and some of the other streets going into 14th and 12th where you get direct access into McLaughlin had a fair amount of traffic, Lynn didn't.
Mayor, I have one last thing. I'm the chair, as of their election today, of the Oregon City Rotary Club's Vocational Service Committee. And so to that end, I thought it might be nice if I extended an invitation to any of you who want to come to Rotary any Wednesday that are, if you're available, any of you that'd like to come as my guest. And also, if you ever are inclined to talk about your vocations or about your vocational service as a elected representative, I'm sure that it'd be a good format for you to engage with the community.
Well, I'm a member of the Oregon City Optimists, and I would invite anybody to come on Tuesday.
And I've already been.
Yeah, you're making a general invitation, so I'll make a general invitation, too. And that's at McCray's Restaurant, and Oregon City Optimists don't fine people for doing things, and the Rotary does, so you're going at your own risk if you-
We don't find our guests.
We need to bring that back.
Is there anybody from the Lions, or from the Soro Optimists, or anybody else that wants to make an invitation at this? Okay. Any of members of the commission have anything else to report?
Yeah.
Yes, Abby?
First, I want to ask, where are we bringing in future agenda items? I didn't see it on the agenda, so.
Well, that's true. Right now.
Right now, okay.
Yes.
I want to work, I want to bring in, and I think I've talked to Tony about this before, rezoning the upper site for the public works. We need to start working on that. I'm-
If I might comment, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we had a site for public works before we zoned our current site.
Well, I'm not talking about the lower site, I'm talking about upper.
I guess they still have the same kind of feeling, but we can, we can pull the commission and find out if they want to look at it this time, or do we want to wait until we have a site for vehicles?
Well, what I would-
I wanna, for the site.
Would suggest is that we rezone it, but not make it effective until they do have their new site.
First of all, we're not the first step in the zoning process, that's the planning commission.
Right.
But I-
I don't, I don't know, at this point, I'm okay with leaving it until-
Let me tell you my reasoning for this. I've been contacted by a lot of developers, three now, and all of them say, "Get back to me when we can do something." Well, we need to do something in this town, we need to show some growth. And they're all extremely excited about it, but we can't get anything done.
Well, did you direct the developers to-
That's not a question right now. The question is that this is something that needs to be done, and if we want to show that we're moving forward, we need to address a problem that we have.
I, I don't know.
I give you my preference, I'll tell the policy commission, do you want to wait until after we have a site, or do you want to go through the zoning process prior to that? I'll start with you, and just work our way around and see with the majority of you.
I don't, I wouldn't want to do anything premature until the first thing's taken care of, which is a new site for public works.
That would be my recommendation.
I kind of feel the same way.
Okay, that's fine.
I think it's good to know, though, that there are people interested in the location. I think it's fine.
It's a little bit frustrating to have people think you have to do something in town, but we're not allowing them to.
Well, I guess I don't, I'm kind of confused about what we have to-
In any case, the zoning process would be filming with the planning commission, and then came to the city commission and so forth, so there's a major process, and-
But we have other spots that they could maybe develop in.
Not like that one.
I do agree with you, Kathy, about the rezoning, and definitely to look at that at the time.
Thank you.
Okay, that-
I have one other thing.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I have two. One thing I wanted to comment was on the library. I went over there and took the ebook training, I came into the new century, and it was fabulous.
Oh, my gosh.
It was just fabulous, and I can check out books from home, and I've read four books this week. It's like, wow, it's really, really neat.
Yeah, we don't need you anymore over there.
For the training, we do.
After the training, it was excellent training. And then the other thing was, we had, Carol Polly and I did a conversation with the commissioners last Thursday. It went very, very well. We had a very small turnout, but good questions, and I forwarded to all of you the comments that were, came.
Some of this, and I know you were doing a very short end listing, some of them were so short that I didn't quite know what they were about, and at one point or another, I presume we're gonna talk about that.
Right, right. And I didn't want to put words in people's mouths, you know, they were giving me bullet points, and so I didn't want to expound on their things. Rocky has suggested that maybe we do the next one at the high school-
Oh, that's great.
-and invite students to get involved in it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Who's on with you on the next one?
Well, I said that as a possibility for the future, and then when you said, "Do you think that's a great idea?", I was like, "Okay, well, then we don't get pizza." So maybe we can figure out the pizza situation, 'cause-
You don't have any machines, huh?
No, I think it's, I think it's a good, I get, you know, students all the time, and teachers all the time, asking about tons of questions about the city.
Can I just bring cookies?
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
You know, I think it, I think it would be nice to have some of these things at non-city facilities. I think the college would also be a great venue.
Absolutely.
That's true, right.
So, yeah, I think it's great you're going to different venues.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oregon City Tourism Council, I want to talk about a couple meetings coming up. The Oregon City Tourism Council has, is one, Oregon City is one of the several communities in Clackamas County that have, that work with the Clackamas Community, or Clackamas County Community Partnership Program, which is a tourism, essentially a tourism grant, where each community that's involved in that program has $20,000 that they have access to to promote tourism, tourism within the city. The Oregon City Tourism Council, way back in, I don't know how far back, years, several, multiple years ago, created the TAP Plan for Oregon City, and the TAP Plan is the Tourism Action Plan. So that plan is updated every year by the Tourism Council, which has been reformed, with representatives from Lodging, Chamber, Main Street, and all of the heritage sites in the city. And it's a, as, as the kind of will of the commission, we really want to make that open and available to anyone to participate in that process. So a meeting that's coming up, first of all, is April 9th, that's gonna be at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, at the Visitor Center. And I believe that's at 4:00 or 4:30, I can't remember, and I was trying to check, but I think it's at 4:00 on April 9th at the Visitor Center. And that's one of the first opportunities that we will be kind of listening to possible project ideas from really anybody. The goal is, we're trying to encourage projects that the entire heritage community and the entire tourism community in Oregon City can support, so not just specific to individual groups or anything. So, because really, the ability to figure out the best way to spend that $20,000 is when we find that everyone in the room supports the idea.
Right.
And so we want to try to encourage people to bring those ideas. The regular heritage, the regular Tourism Council will be there, too, so those representatives will also open it to everyone else. So that's April 9th. That'll be followed by a larger meeting on, right now it looks like April 24th, which is the same day of our urban renewal budget meeting, but this tourism meeting would be at the Pioneer Center as well, but at 7:00, so we're hoping we can figure that out. And that will be a larger, a group hopefully opening it to wider. And the goal would be by the end of April to, by the end of April to have really an idea of what we want to do with that $20,000 to improve tourism in Oregon City. So I think that's pretty much all I wanted to add to that.
That's great, Ron. Thank you.
Any other reports? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to make a note that future agenda items are traditionally not on your regular agenda, they're on the work session agenda. So that's why you didn't see it there today.
That's true. Well, hearing no other comments, adjourned. We've got a session, right?